Welcome to the regularly scheduled public meeting of the Shreveport Cattle Metropolitan Planning Commission meeting. It is traditional that when we begin our session that we begin with an invocation and then a pledge of allegiance. I'm going to get Mr. Moss to do the pledge of allegiance and since I didn't ask anybody prior to ringing the bell to do an invocation, so I'll do that today. If you care to join us, please stand. You all, we thank you for this day and we thank you for this opportunity once again to gather and discuss the business of this, our community. Above all, we pray for wisdom, knowledge, and understanding as we entertain the requests from our citizens that are here to invest in our community and improve the quality of life for our citizens. It is in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. This afternoon, as we begin our meeting for a public hearing agenda items, if you wish to make public comments on an application, we have MPC comment slips at the speaker's stand next to the podium. For future notification purposes, it is very important that you fill out a slip and drop it in the box when you come forward to speak. Please state your full name, your mailing address, and zip code before addressing the board. We will call each case on the agenda in order and hear first from the applicant, then those speaking in favor. Ten minutes are allocated in the principal spokesperson for the principal spokesperson and three minutes for additional speakers. We will then hear from those wishing to speak against an application. Again, ten minutes are allocated for the principal spokesperson and three minutes for each additional speaker. One representative of the application can then speak in rebuttal if desired. After hearing comments on each case, the board will then immediately deliberate and vote on that case before moving on to the next case on our agenda. Please note that when the board is deliberating, members of the public are not permitted to make any comments. Any member of the public may request a copy of the board's decision on a particular case by contacting our office at 318-673-6480 after 1:00 PM on tomorrow or by accessing our website at shreveportcattlempc.com. For consent items and other items on the agenda not requiring a public hearing, public comments can be made upon requesting by filling out MPC comment slip. If comments are requested for a specific agenda item, the chair will offer an opportunity for those comments prior to the commission taking action on the agenda item itself. All of the MPC board's zoning recommendations are submitted either to the city council or the parish commission for a final decision. Depending on the location of the property in question, please note that it is your responsibility to contact the appropriate governing body about their procedure as related to the matter you are concerned with. Copies of this document and the phone numbers to contact the governing bodies are available on the table next to the podium and the entryway to this room right out front. As a courtesy, please remember to turn off cell phones while the MPC board is in session. The commission values your testimony. We appreciate your compliance with these guidelines. Having completed that portion of our opening, we will now request approval of the July 6, 2022 minutes. Someone, some board member.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
There was a motion by, all right, Mr. Elverson and second by Ms. McCullough. All those in favor, please say yes by touching your screen to the far right, voting yes or no if you're in opposition. All right, that motion carries. We're on item number six, case number 22-141-C, zoning request, Embow LLC. If someone is here representing that organization, please come forward.
Charles Bradford Brose, address is 810 Linwood Avenue in Stonewall, Louisiana. I read the statement going forward for the application and everything looks good for me.
Can you tell us a little bit about what you're asking for?
Uh, we're asking to rezone from C2 to C3. It's a contractor's office. It's currently at the C2. We've got some surrounding properties that are C3 in the area. Our contracting office is not a normal situation for contractors. We're a mitigation company, so anybody that has water damage, fire, mold, and some biohazard stuff, we do reconstruction out of that, and I think that's why it kind of falls into that contractor's category. But we're looking to get it rezoned, put a fence around it, kind of update the property a little bit, you know, bring it back to life. I think it's been vacant for eight months or so, and we could utilize it as well.
Ladies and gentlemen, any questions for Mr. Brose? All right, sir, thank you very much. Is there anyone else present who care to speak in favor of this request? Anyone else present who care to speak in favor of this request?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I received a call from Mr. Thomas Carbondy, who represents the property owners. Just sharing with you that he could not be here. He had an emergency that he had to go and address, but the property owners are in total support of this development and encourage you to approve it.
All right, sir. Having heard that, is there anyone present who care to speak in opposition to this request? Any opposition to this request? Anyone present who care to speak in opposition to this request? All right, hearing none. Board members, what's your pleasure?
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Moss.
Second.
Second by Mr. Robertson. All those in favor, please indicate by saying yes on your board, oppositions no. That motion carries. Thank you very much. Item number seven, case number 22-144-C, zoning request, Rayleigh and Associates.
Good afternoon. Reggie Lewis, Rayleigh and Associates, 4913 Shed Road, Bossier City, 71111. I am here representing our client, LSU Health Science Foundation of Shreveport. Uh, that does not look correct.
I think it is.
Okay, I see it. It's, okay. Yes, that is correct. I'm sorry. Uh, our client currently owns the entire block between Jennings, Williams, and Sanford. This was originally platted as a residential subdivision in the 1930s, consisted of about 40 lots. Along about the 1960s, about the east half of the block was purchased by a church, and it existed as such until just a few years ago. So, right now, we have a zoning mix of RA and IC due to the church and the former residential properties. Our client has purchased all of the properties over the last few years, and our intent is to ultimately build a parking lot there that services the medical school, about 370 spaces. But until we get to that point, that's what I was looking for, until we get to that point, we need to get this zoning cleared up and get it all in the proper zoning and not a mixed zoning.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen, any questions for Mr. Lewis relative to this request?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Ms. Robertson.
Mr. Lewis, thank you for coming today. At our work session prior to this meeting, we discussed the level of cooperation from LSU about landscaping.
Mm-hmm.
And can you speak to that with regard to the future parking area here?
Yes, we're still in that process. I'm working with Alice on that. She has made some requests in regards to landscaping and lighting and security and things of that nature, and so we fully intend to cooperate with her request. It's just, it's taken some time. It's, it's pretty laborious, including irrigation. I mean, it's an entire city block, so I'm getting there. I'm working on it. I haven't submitted, resubmitted actually, what she's requested, but I will get there. But to answer your question, we're gonna do everything we can to make Alice happy.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any comments? Well, Mr. Lewis, before you take your seat, please convey to your people there that, that we really appreciate the free parking spaces across the street, the free parking lot. My charge from my church is to visit sick members when they're housed in that particular healthcare facility.
Okay.
And having a free parking space over there makes it really, really nice to get in and out, so let them know we do appreciate that, boy.
I will tell them, and hopefully you'll make it a little nicer than it is now.
Well, it's, I know it's a work in progress.
It is.
You don't have to pay to get in there now, and that's, I think that's really good. Any other comments from board members? Mr. Lewis, thank you very much. Is there anyone else present who care to speak in favor of this request? Anyone else present who care to speak in favor of this request? Hearing none. Anyone present who care to speak in opposition to this request? Any opposition to this request? Hearing none. Thank you very much. Board members, what's your pleasure?
I'll motion approval, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Mr. Robertson.
Second.
Second by Mr. Moss. All those in favor, please vote yes, oppositions vote no.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. That motion carries. We're at item number eight, case number 22-145-C, zoning request, Wimble LLC. I may have pronounced it incorrectly, but pardon me.
I believe it's Wimwall.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Jeff Perrigo. I'm with Prevo Design. I'm here representing Wimwall LLC. We are requesting a zoning change from R17 to a C1 general office.
Mr. Perrigo, before you go any further, honor us with an address for record, for cause purpose.
601 Spring Street, Shreveport, 7111.
Thank you, sir. You may continue.
That was it.
All right. Tell us a little bit about where we're going with this and what's our purpose, please?
Uh, the contractor, the owner owns property at that location. It's currently zoned at R17. They wish to build their office. It's about a 4,000 square foot building. It will not contain a warehouse or shop, or they will not be storing any kind of equipment on site. It'll simply be just an office building.
Okay. All right. Board members, any questions or comments to Mr. Perrigo? All right, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else present who care to speak in favor of this request? Anyone else present who care to speak in favor of this request? Hearing none. Is there anyone present who care to speak in opposition to this request? Any opposition to this request? Hearing none. Board members, what's your pleasure? Motion by Ms. McCullough.
Second.
Second by Mr. Sater. All those in favor, please vote yes, oppositions vote no. Mr. Perrigo, thank you. That motion carries.
Thank you.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen, item number 10 on our agenda, case number 22-1-CAC, closure and abandonment, city of Shreveport.
You've forgotten.
Whoop, did I get one?
Yeah.
I apologize. Oh, Mr. Taylor, I'm so sorry. All right. Case number 22-147-C, small planned unit development and site plan. Didn't do that on purpose, I'm sorry. All right.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Good afternoon. I'm Andy Craig with Moore &amp; Associates, 1324 North Horn, Suite 301, Shreveport, 71107. I've been before y'all a lot. This is a little bit more, kind of an unusual case that we're presenting here as for a permission to a chicken coop. Can you show the other map there? Oh, yeah, that one, yes. The owners of this lot and the applicant live in this, on this lot right here, and this is the lot that they own it also. They want to do the chicken coop. And since they're not contiguous, there is a vacant lot in between them that they're using as garden area. Since it's not contiguous, the best way for them to get permission for the, properly build the chicken coop is to request a small planned unit development. As we understand it, since there's no primary structure on that lot, it is currently vacant. Since there's no primary structure, the spud was required to allow the chicken coop as an auxiliary structure and site plan approval. If you, if you read the data in the staff report, I made one mistake in the minutes for the neighborhood meeting that we had. The staff report said that there was one guest at the, at the meeting that was neither in opposition or for it. Well, the neighbor did show up, he was curious about what was going on, wanted to see it all, but he was in favor of the, the project. I just didn't state that right in the notes and the minutes that were submitted to the staff. Also, the staff shared with me a single letter of opposition about the chicken coop. Apparently, they were assuming something commercial because they were concerned about the vast amount of waste and all that'd be produced. Well, by the regulations, as I understand it, they, they can't exceed eight chickens in the coop. I don't think they even plan on that. I think they're gonna have four to six, but the most they could have by code to be eight. They're gonna recycle the chicken litter into their garden area, so there'll be virtually no, nothing to clean up or anything to spoil there, so just wanted to address that, those concerns. So, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Board members, any questions for Mr. Craig? Is this? You may want to use the term hen, so that...
I'm sorry, what's that?
You may want to use the term hen because that's, that's what...
That's right. They are all hens, though you need to see the code also prohibits roosters. I'd love to hear a rooster waking up early in the morning, but most people don't.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr....
I have a question. Are you guys, is this just for personal use? The laying, the, you're gonna have laying hens. Is this just for personal use or for...
Yeah, it's a project for their kids. They've got a couple of young, young kids, that can involve them in it and, and all that, so it's educational and, and for the hens, the laying hens.
Thank you very much.
How many hens?
Ma'am?
How many?
I don't, I think they said six, but the code prohibits anything more than eight, so they'll have four to eight at the most, so...
I believe the maximum number is eight.
Eight laying hens.
Eight laying hens.
Right.
Any other comments or questions? All right. Oh, thank you very much, sir. Is there anyone else present who care to speak in favor of this request? Anyone else present who care to speak in favor of this request? All right. Hearing none. Anyone present who care to speak in opposition to this request? Any opposition to this request? All right. Hearing none. Board members, what's your pleasure?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Sater. Second by Mr. Elverson. All those in favor, please vote yes, oppositions no. Madam Secretary, which one of us didn't do it right?
Mr. Robertson.
Mr. Robertson, would you touch yours again?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Bingo. All right. Thank you very much. That motion carries.
Yep.
Now, I believe we move to item number 10, case number 22-1-CAC, closure and abandonment, city of Shreveport, property management section. Anyone present to address that?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Clark?
I did request that that would be a representative from property management here today to answer any questions that you may have. There seemed to be a breakdown in the communications that we are going to correct because they have not come in quite some time, but feel that it's, it's important that if the city of Shreveport is making an application to you, that a representative from the city of Shreveport comes and responds to any questions that you may have. Although, we recommend that you approve this because this is part of the parking lot that you've already approved for the archery LSU health location. But I just wanted you to know that, that in the future, it is, it is my desire that when we have closure and abandonment, that there's a representative from property management here for your questions.
Thank you very much, sir. Board members, any questions or concerns relative to that explanation? Hearing none. You heard the request on the part of our executive director. What's your pleasure? Let's just, hold on just a second. Is there anyone present who care to speak in opposition to this closure and abandonment? Anyone present who care to speak in opposition to this closure and abandonment? All right. Hearing none. Now, board members, what's your pleasure? Motion by Ms. McCullough. Second by...
Second.
Mr. Sater, please vote. All those in favor, vote yes, oppositions no. All right. That motion carries. At this particular time, item number 11, case number 22-8-CTAC, co-text amendment, Mr. Alan Bailey.
Adam Bailey, 505 Travis, Suite 440, Shreveport, 71101, here representing MPC. Before you, you have some co-text amendments. I discussed these co-text amendments at the, at the pre-briefing meeting, and I believe all of you were in there, so I will just quickly state that currently, if a new short-term rental is proposed and an approved short-term rental is operating within 500 feet of the proposed short-term rental, prior to the approval of the proposed short-term rental application, a special exception use is required to be approved by the zoning board of appeals. The amendments before you would only require that type B1 and B2 permits from those distance requirements. Type A permits would be exempt. It's also, you need to note that short-term rentals located within the D1 zoning district are exempt from any distance requirements. But I won't bore you with the details. I just passed out the Exhibit A. Unfortunately, that was failed to be added to your staff report. So, if you actually look at Exhibit A, you see all the text that's in underlying blue is new text. Red text is what's deleted. So, if you just go through that very quickly under number three, we're beefing up the, the definition of what a B1 is. When you get down to B, we talk about those distance requirements. In C, I discuss the waiver that gives the executive director on a case-by-case basis approval to waive the requirements as needed from having an applicant go before the ZBA to receive special exception use approval. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Bailey? Mr. Bailey, we listened to your presentation upstairs, and this is evident, and of course, it's maybe repetitious, but we really appreciate the volume of work you guys put in to make this user-friendly, if you will, and at the same time, we pray that when it goes on up the flagpole, that our work will not have been in vain.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We are fast-tracking these, so these will actually be introduced to city council on Tuesday.
All right.
Provided they get a favorable recommendation.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen, any questions for Mr. Bailey? Hearing none. What's your pleasure?
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Moss and second by Mr. McCullough. All those in favor, please vote yes, oppositions vote no. Ladies and gentlemen, on the, the agenda that we have in front of us, I believe we are... Did you get a vote, Mr. Chair? Did I get a, did I call for a vote?
Yeah, you did.
It's lit up. Somebody didn't push their button. I'm sorry. Okay, guys, check your button one more time. I got a full set on the screen. Everybody voted. Thank you very much. That motion carries. All right. We're down to oval business. Mr. Clark, I don't know how to order to run this, so I've got four or five items in front of me. Why don't we talk a little bit about drawing as relates to terms of office and participation on this board? Can we do that now?
If, if you would allow me, before you go to that part of the agenda, Mr. Chair, we had a case on the July 6, 2022 agenda that was deferred and continued. That case was Durham Transport Academy, case number 22-118-C. The case was deferred because the applicant was not in attendance at the, at the meeting in July. For some reason, that case did not transfer over to this agenda, but it is before you today, and the applicant is here. So, we would ask that in order to place it on the agenda, that we get a, a motion from a board member, a second, and if it's a unanimous vote by you, then the applicant can come forth and explain her application.
All right. Give us a chance to get set up here, and then we'll, we'll address that, please. Yes, sir. Mr. Robertson.
While we're setting all this up, I need to ask Mr. Clark, is this a controversial matter that would involve opposition?
To our knowledge, it is not controversial. We can yield to the attorney, but she felt that it was, since it was deferred and continued, that we could deal with this application today. It's, there was no opposition initially to this application. It was just a matter of the applicant was not present last month.
Thank you.
Yes, as Mr. Clark articulated, you guys can still, the, the matter will be taken up with a unanimous vote, so if you guys are comfortable, you can do so. If you're not, it's also still up to your discretion, as long as you guys just have to agree to take the matter up, so you might discuss it...
Am I to understand that I'm to request a motion to hear this today to be legal? Is that what I'm supposed to do?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Am I supposed to call for a motion to hear this?
Yes, call for a motion on the matter, and then the board has to have a unanimous vote in order to take it up today.
All right. Thank you. Oh, everybody got it up on their screen? Can you read that little print, or you know how to make yours big? Can you read that little print, or you know how to make yours big? You can make yours big?
At the top, up there, where the numbers are. Just go to plus, the plus symbol. Everybody, Mr. Sater, slide yours over. There you go.
All right. Everybody kind of got it in front of them? All right, we'll entertain a motion to hear this case.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Robertson, second by Mr. Moss. All those in favor, please vote yes. All right, the motion is carried to hear case number 22-118-C, special use permit and site plan Durham Transport Academy. Is anyone present who care to speak in favor of this request? Good afternoon, ma'am.
Good afternoon. Latronia Durham of Durham Transport Academy, 543 Honeycomb Drive, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71115.
Can you tell us a little bit about what you're trying to get done?
I come to make this request today, I went to file, I'm making a special use permit, a request, to use our property at 7312 Tremere Boulevard, to be allowed to perform the necessary bagging maneuvers for our academy. We purchased six acres of land here, Durham Transport Express, which is a trucking facility. At the time of purchasing that land, I had no, I didn't have a vision in sight that I would do a driving academy, that I want to even entertain a driving academy. But as we were building, the need seemed so great for truckers, so we got together and we opened this academy. When I applied for my occupational license, license for Durham, I have occupational license for Durham Transport Express is one entity, it's a trucking facility. But then I applied for my occupational license for Durham Transport Academy, because it's two separate entities. I was denied that permit because of the, I had to speak with Mr. Austin Chaney, explained to me, because of the language of my occupational license. It said Durham Transport Facility, didn't say facility and academy. So at that time, about three months ago, I was given permission to do, I got an occupational license for office space only for Durham Transport Academy. So for the last three months, I have been renting space, rent space from another parking lot to do our bagging maneuvers. In order for academy, in order for you to train students to drive a truck, they have to do three bagging maneuvers, which is a straight line bagging, offsetting the alley dock. After making dozens of trips down here, talking with Ms. Glenda Thomas, Mr. Reginald, Mr. Austin Chaney, I was told, okay, you need to get another engineer out there, draw it up, some other X amount of dollars, draw it up, show us what you're gonna do to bag in there. We need to know, how far are you from the street? How far are you from our four corners? Making sure that bagging noise is not bothering other people. They was real, they made it real simple for me to understand while I was going through those techniques, and I really did appreciate that. And I've done all that, done all that, and I've submitted it, submitted it over. So my request is to use our parking facility, which is six acres. It's in a dead-end street, dead-end street, closest proximity is an oil and gas refinery, oil and gas refinery, and the railroad tracks of Mansfield Road. We're asking for the, our turn to use this to do our bagging maneuvers for our academy.
All right, Ms. Durham, ladies and gentlemen, any questions for this applicant? Yes, sir, Mr. Sater.
Is that right there at Valley View Drive?
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay.
Anyone else? Is there a question?
The proposed use educational facility.
Pull your mic down, Ms. McCullough.
The proposed use is educational facility vocational school. That's what this is, is that what I'm looking at?
Yes, 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 ma'am, Ms. McCullough. Well, we've already got the occupational license for the vocational school part of it. What it is, is a four-week training course. You do one week in class, and you do three weeks in the actual trucks. So two weeks of those, three weeks you're on the yard. You need to be at a place where you're able to bag up properly, you're able to make the maneuvers that's needed to pass the state recommended CDL test.
Okay.
And you're granting, Ms. McCullough, you're granting her special use permit to do an educational vocational school? And that's what she's talking about, the truck driving training? And the site plan being approved that allows them to make those maneuvers that truck drivers are required to be able to do in order to be certified and get the CDL, I think, Ms. Durham.
So, let me ask another question. I see this is in city council in Greens District. Have you spoke with the representatives in the area?
Yes, I have. I spoke with city council, James Green, and Commissioner Stephon Jones. Spoke with both of them prior to coming down here. Speaking with Mr. Stephen Jean, speaking with Alan Clark, speaking with everybody, so they'll understand exactly what I'm trying to do and show them that it's in reason, because when you say a CDL school, I mean, sometimes it kind of throws people off. So they need to know exactly what you're doing, exactly what it requires, requires a truck, a truck actually pulling onto a facility and doing a straight bag. You're teaching, you're teaching students how to bag up in a straight line, which you got, you got three-inch cones directing your path. And all of this is done within a gated lot. We have six acres, and it's a gate all the way around our facility.
Okay.
So nothing is actually done on the streets of Caddo. Everything is done within our parking lot, within our own six acres.
So you have like instructional time prior to the bagging up and all of that? I mean, I see educational facilities, so you have some instructional time prior to the driving?
Yes, ma'am.
And how long does that last?
It's a four-week class, so they actually do it two weeks. You have one week inside the classroom, in theory. You have two weeks of bagging, then you have one week on the road. And then on the road, is approved by TRSP Board or Louisiana Board of Reaches.
Okay. Thank you, that's all I have.
All right. Anyone else have questions? Well, Ms. Durham, you know the way down here now, huh? And I trust our staff has been kind to you and trying to help you. You said that already, and we appreciate your attitude. Any more questions for Ms. Durham? All right. Is there anyone else present who care to speak in favor of this request? Anyone else present who care to speak in favor of this request? Is there anyone present who care to speak in opposition to this request? Any opposition to this request? Hearing none, we'll entertain a motion, board members?
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Moss, second by Ms. McCullough. All those in favor, please vote yes, oppositions no.
Congratulations, Ms. Durham.
I thank you all for your time and opportunity. And I do thank you guys for being patient with me, Mr. Stephen, Mr. Clark, Clark, and Mr. Reginald, I really do appreciate you guys, thank you so much. Have a good afternoon.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Clark, I believe that concludes the business portion. We're down to old business.
You have no committees yet, so we're getting to that point, Mr.?
Yes, sir. In fact, we'll have one here in a few minutes, if you will.
And under new business, I'm gonna ask Ms. Garge to go down to the microphone and explain to you exactly what we need to do. At our last meeting, we drew lots, and we did not have all members present in order to draw lots. And wanted her to go through the process of exactly what you would have to do in order to complete that process today, and what happens as a result of your completing that process.
Yes, just like the matter that we just undertook, because this matter is not on the agenda, you guys once again have to state the matter, vote on it, have a unanimous approval in order to take up the matter. If you choose to do so today, I believe there are three members who were not here last month, and so their terms were not determined. So Mr. Bailey does have the three remaining terms available for you guys to draw randomly, without being able to see, of course. And whichever term you get, make sure you say it out loud so that Ms. Colbert can record what term you receive, and you can go from there.
Just so I'm clear.
Yes, sir.
The persons who are to draw today were persons who were not here.
Yes, so I believe Mr. Moss, Mr. Baldarris, and I don't remember who the third member was, Mr. Elberston. So they will draw. You guys will find everyone else already drew their terms, so you guys can stay put. But they, those three have to draw in order to determine what their terms will be.
So at this particular time, I am to request this opportunity to be cleared by motion?
That's correct.
All right. Don't leave the, don't leave.
My apologies.
I believe my challenge right now is to call for a motion to continue the drawing of terms on this board. We have a motion by Ms. McCullough, and a second by whom?
I'll say it.
All right, Mr. Robinson, all those in favor, please vote yes. All right. Thank you, counsel, that motion carries.
You're welcome.
All right, Mr. Adam Bailey, I believe you're the purveyor of the numbers? All the good ones have already been full, I can tell you that. All right, we'll start with Mr. Baldarris, what's your number, say it out loud, please?
Five years.
Five years, okay. Mr. Elberston?
Five years.
All right, and Mr. Moss?
Twenty years, no, four years.
Madam Secretary, was that clear enough?
Four.
Yes.
All right. Mr. Clark, I believe you've got that part covered, what's our next step?
So, it's just important, Mr. Andrews, that you note that that the terms began effective today. So the four-year terms, the five-year terms will start today, and each other term, the one-year term, three-year term, the two-year term, all will start effective today, which is August the 3rd.
Okay, does everyone have a standard?
And they will run that, those number of years.
All right.
That behind us, we had asked that you would do a nominating committee, Mr. Andrews, to recommend the offices for the remaining term 2022 for the vice chair and the secretary, because if something happens and you're not here, we could not have a meeting.
Well, we need somebody to be here, don't we?
Yes, sir.
So that we'll be clear, we were able to elect a president because we had to have somebody as a chairman. Now we've got everybody on board. Our challenge at this moment is, I was asked to put together a nominating committee that would meet and come back the next month with a recommendation for someone to fill the slot as vice chair and the slotter secretary, any questions? All right. I'm going to call out some names, I believe that's my challenge, counselor, is that correct? All right, and then if you choose not to do that, please let me know now before we leave the chambers. But I'm asking Ms. Jackson and Ms. McCullough, I'm asking Mr. Sater and Mr. Robertson, those four persons to serve on a nominating committee between now and the first meeting in September. We'll bring back to this group recommendations for you to vote on for vice chair and secretary. Is there anyone in opposition to accepting that challenge as stated a while ago with your name?
It was vice chair, and what else?
Secretary. We will reach out to you and identify a time where all of us can get together. It has to be publicized, and then once we, and I'll be meeting with you, once we agree on a recommendation, those names will be brought back to the board to be voted on next month, so that we can move forward with the way we're sitting now. All right, any questions?
So you're gonna be notifying us as to when we're gonna meet?
I will call you myself.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
What is the term of service that we're gonna be appointing people to?
One.
Secretary and vice.
It would be the remainder of 2022.
The remainder of 2022.
So we'll have to go through this again in January?
And I apologize for you having to go through this difficult process again, but then we'll get on the right track. I have some comments to make in just a few minutes about the tracks we've been on.
Now, the question was, the persons that the nominating committee recommend the board to vote on at the next meeting will be in place to finish out the year 2022. Starting January 1, the nominating committee will be possibly reconvened?
Correct.
To identify board members, officers, starting January 2023. Is that the way I understand it, counselor?
That is correct.
All right then, clear as mud. I'll reach out to Ms. Jackson, Ms. McCullough, Mr. Robinson, and Mr. Sater. Hurry soon. All right. Mr. Clark, I believe that covers that part.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I have a question that's relevant to this discussion.
Please go right ahead.
I drew a fairly large number. What is the ability of any future administrations to change my service?
We had that discussion early on.
Oh, we did? I, we've not experienced that. I've not experienced that. There were, there has been a case in the past where the board member's term expired and that the administration chose not to, I say administration, the city council or parish commission, at that time, it was, they were together. They chose not to recommend that person. As a matter of fact, two people that I can remember that happened to in the past. It is not something that happens very often.
So should we have a new mayor come 2023, that person does not have the unilateral authority to discontinue my service?
He has six, he has to wait six years.
I chose six. I mean, that was the number that was on my slip.
That's why I said it. Could I just reaffirm?
It's a six-year sentence, in other words.
That's correct.
Could I just reaffirm, Mr. Chair, that the mayor, as you well know, did not appoint, totally appoint the members to the MPC board? He recommended you, and the council confirmed you. So the council, in actuality, is the appointing authority. But these terms are not governed at the discretion of a mayor. These terms are established, they're gonna be part of the bylaws, and these terms will go unless you do something that is in total conflict with your participation on this board and a public hearing is conducted, and you are suspended from this board by this board. You will serve the six years. That makes any sense?
It does. Let me elaborate a little further. Is there anything prohibiting me from participating in the mayoral campaigns?
Attorney, it's my opinion that you could not actively campaign for any particular candidate.
If you were to choose to, you have to sit down.
If you choose to actively campaign for any particular candidate, you will have to resign from this commission. Now, you have the right, like I have, that I've had for 28 years, is the vote for whomever you choose to vote for. But you are a governing body, so you should not be utilizing your influence for any particular candidate.
That almost sounds like civil service.
That's to do with the Ethics Commission, and they can get to be awfully non-understanding.
So what I understood you to say was that I am prohibited from participating? So what I understood you to say was that I am prohibited from participating in the, these upcoming elections?
You cannot actively campaign for a particular candidate. If you are so desiring to actively campaign for a candidate, you need to resign from this commission and then you can campaign for whomever you choose.
And that applies to?
But if you choose to resign, to continue on this board, you should not, uh, campaign for any particular candidate.
I'm glad I asked the question. Does that apply to council elections as well?
That applies to any elections.
All the way up to US Senate?
That applies to any elections.
Okay. I'm glad I asked the question. Thank you.
I believe that's similar to the Hatch Act. Is that the term you familiar with, Moiselle and anything else? Yes, I had to operate under that same, uh, law, working for USDA. All right, Mr. Clark, next step. If you don't have something, I've got something.
I think our next step, uh, the last time we had a meeting, I did not, uh, I've let you hear from the, uh, community planning section, I've let you hear from the, uh, land use planning section, uh. We have, uh, some issues that, uh, the zoning enforcement section would like to bring, uh, to your attention very briefly in a report about signs, certificates of occupancies and complaints. Mr. Regent or Jordan?
Yeah, good afternoon. All right, as far as the certificates of occupancy go, uh, from the last time we had a meeting in July up until now, we have issued eighteen commercial certificates of occupancy and twenty-one home base certificates of occupancy. And that brings the yearly total for a hundred and ninety-three commercial and two hundred and thirteen home base. Uh, from the last time that we have had a meeting, our violations that we have, our complaints that we have written up, uh, we have written up eighty from July sixth until today and a total of three hundred and fifty-five for the year. As y'all may or may not be aware, those black reader boards that have been all around the city, they, they have, the council prohibited them after June thirtieth of this year and, um, some, well, a lot have been removed, uh, a great number have not been removed. We have written up a total of fifty-nine that are currently out there, still on site, on locations. Uh, from those fifty-nine, fifty-four have been turned over to the prosecutor's office and five are going to legal today and they will be turned over to the prosecutor's office once the, uh, legal division do, does what they need to do and then they will turn them over to the prosecutor. Any questions on any of that?
Is everybody up to speed on what we're talking about with the reader boards? I see some heads going like this.
You said, you, excuse me, you said there were eighty violations. I think the last time we met, I think about thirty of those had been addressed, so what do we?
So, but, when you saying violations, are you talking about for the portable reader boards or are you talking about? Cause I said eighty violations, that was eighty complaints, not, not in, that was other than the reader board.
Oh, okay. I got you. Other than reader boards.
And then I gave a breakdown for the portable reader boards that were prohibited as of June thirtieth of this year.
And how many was that?
Uh, it was around, right now we have written up fifty-nine that were still out there. Some, some have, a lot, I said, a lot have been removed, but the ones that are still out there, uh, not in compliance. We had fifty-nine that were written up violations. Fifty-four of those fifty-nine have been turned over to the city prosecutor's office. The other five are going to the city attorney's office and they're gonna turn them over to the prosecutor's office after they create the file or whatever it is that, that they do.
Right. Got you. Okay, thank you.
Any questions about the reader boards? I've seen some still up, I've seen some still up that are blank now. I guess they're waiting for the, the owners to pick them up.
Those are still in violation.
They're still in violation?
Yeah, they need to be, they need to be totally removed.
Got you. All right. Any questions relative to that? Mr. Jordan, we appreciate what you're doing in that regard. While we're talking about reports, I believe I'm gonna throw this in there, Mr. Clark, if it's all right with you. The progress report regarding case heard by MPC, it's, uh, next to your, uh, seating where you are. You might want to, uh, take a look at that and see what's actually moved forward versus what we, what we've talked about around this day. I said, uh, Mr. Dean promised me a year or so ago that he started doing that and we really appreciate it because it tells us a little bit about whether things are moving forward based on, uh, what we approved here, uh, in our sessions. And thank you for that, Mr. Dean and the staff members. Mr. Clark?
One last thing, Mr. Chair, uh, we're in the budget process with, uh, both the city and the parish. As you well know, uh, and I, we are very, we are very encouraged that we will have a, another contract with the parish, to provide administrative services, uh, in the five mile area outside the, uh, unincorporated area outside the city limits. So we're in the process of completing that process. We are behind, uh, because there, there are just a lot of, uh, unknowns that we've had to deal with. Generally, as you well know, we bring, uh, the budget to the executive committee and to the, uh, uh, commission for review and approval. We're, uh, optimistic that we will have that done prior to our budget going to the city council for approval. Uh, we don't really do a detailed budget to the parish. They appropriate, uh, subsidy for the operation of these services. But I just wanted you to know, we have not forgotten that and it's our intention, uh. Steven Jean has been working extremely hard, uh, to complete this process. And he's just about finished with it, which is, uh, which is an incredible job because, uh, earlier he had told me, I don't know if we're gonna make it or not, so, uh, uh, I just wanted you to know and, and compliment Steven on a job well done of putting in some, some, some extra time and getting this process complete because if it doesn't get completed, uh, you have no employees and there's no need for you to have meetings because you'll have nothing to discuss. So I just wanted to share that with you, that, uh, this process is about to be completed and, uh, we will be bringing that information to you.
All right, sir.
Mr. Windsor?
Yes, sir.
All right, one other comment, uh, that I want to add.
Yes, sir.
And make, when y'all brought up the weekly progress, I mean, the monthly progress reports, I, I, I thought about it. If any of the board members would like to know what businesses are coming or possibly coming to the city, we do supply that on our website, the pending, uh, certificates of occupancy. We post it weekly on the website, if anybody wants to see that information.
All right, sir. Thank you very much. Mr. Robinson?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if I can return to the reader board issue just quickly.
Yeah, you bet.
Mr. Jordan, can you put that number of fifty-nine in some kind of context for us? As in, uh, what was the largest number of permits that you issued for those reader boards at one time within the last, say, year or two?
Okay, I don't, I can't tell you the number of permits that were issued, but I can tell you that from the time that we allowed them up until they were not allowed, we had over a hundred that were out, out there. Cause all of them wasn't permitted. Some, some of them were in violation, but they still were on locations. So we had over a hundred on location. Probably, I think, I, I can't remember, I think it was like a hundred and twenty though.
Hundred and twenty?
Yeah, somewhere around that number.
So that would be your estimate of the, the, the largest number of those reader board signs that were in existence at one time within the last, say, year or two?
Correct.
And now you're down to fifty-nine?
Correct. We had, well, one company removed all of tho, all of theirs, another company have yet to remove theirs.
Thank you.
All right, sir. Mr. Sater?
Any update on the truck parking on Kingston and Francis that they were supposed to be moving and I have seen no changes yet?
It is our understanding that, uh, the company has found another location, uh, they're going through the process. Uh, their case is still pending before, uh, the City Shreveport Court. Uh, and, uh, the, we have not, uh, dropped any charges against them, so that case will still be heard by the City Shreveport Court. But we think it's gonna solve itself because they had found some industrially zoned property, uh, and we felt like that, that location would much better suit their desires than the location at Francis and Kingston Road. We will keep you informed that as we know, it's, it's important to understand that once, uh, these cases are turned over to the city attorney's office, we have no more jurisdiction. Uh, out of the kindness of the city attorney's office, they sometime will update us on where things are in the city prosecutor. But we have no influence, we have no jurisdiction, we have nothing other than to wait until due process occurs.
I understand that, but the school season has started again and there's more trucks than ever on that parking lot?
We will, I, I will ask Mr. Jordan to have an inspector to go out and do an assessment, uh, there should not be an increase in the number of trucks. It should be the same as it was at the time that they went before you and council and council overturned your decision. But we will look into that and, and take appropriate actions that, as far as communicating with, uh, the legal department to get some other additional actions taken against them.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Mr. Clark?
I cannot think of anything else, Mr. Chair. It's been an exhausting day, uh. We try, we try to give you as much information as we possibly can. We plan to continue to provide you with information at every meeting, uh. I thank the board for making me aware of the fact that it does not matter that we are doing positive and wonderful things. If nobody knows that we're doing it, it does no good, uh, that the public needs to be aware. So we're gonna make you aware and work hard to make the public aware of all the activities that are happening in the MPC.
Well, a couple of other things before we shut her down and ask for a motion. We talked a little bit about the bylaws are still being tweaked, uh.
Yeah, we, we, we have some more information to revise in the bylaws since, uh, certain things are changing as a result of where we are in our, in our creation and development. That's why I did not bring that up today.
All right, then my next, the next item on my agenda, I see a hand.
Yeah, when you get there. I want to say something.
Okay, give me a second.
Okay.
All right, oh, I do wanna recognize those who attended the training session, uh, out at the, uh, facility, the state facility. If you'll raise your hands for the rest of us to know that you actually did go through the, the training session, Ms. McCullough. And who else was, is that it? The rest of you guys are already trained?
I think Dr. Tebow was also.
Dr. Tebow was there and I went through it again and I did bring a copy of two of the, the PowerPoint presentation, if anybody wants one, just for reference purposes, I'll be glad to share this with you. And I also brought a copy of my certificate for having attended the training session. And, uh, we filed a copy of that upstairs, uh, for, uh, the secretary to, uh, put in my file. Um, Mr. Moss?
Yeah. Okay, um, earlier, the young lady, Ms. Durham, um, and this, this goes a long way on the things that we do here at the MPC and what the staff is doing. I remember when this young lady stepped in front of the city council and I wanna say it was sometime back in June. She stepped in front of, she was in front of the city council and she didn't know the procedures. So it was good to see her in front of us and, and giving y'all the kudos that y'all deserve here to let people know that the system does work and, and that we're doing some good things down here at the MPC. Because I saw at the city council meeting, she didn't know, you know, she was asking the questions and I think you were there too, Mr. Clark?
I was there, yes.
And she spoke to Mr. Clark and I see the progress, so it's good just to see it. Uh, because she didn't have a clue and to see her stand in front of us and give her presentation and just to say that, uh, the MPC helped her with everything he needed and staff, it was a good thing to see today.
That, thank you so much, Mr. Moss, and that makes me share with you one last thing. As you know, at the last meeting, uh, was Austin Chin's last meeting. Uh, but we have been interviewing, uh, new planners, new potential planners. You see the, the value of, of the young planners that we bring and the wonderful job that Steven and Alice does in reference to, uh, bringing them along and how Ben does such a wonderful job in his presentations. And for two months, uh, maybe less time, I would say, when is he gonna be able to, to do something? But, uh, you see what a wonderful job they do with them. We should have another planner in place, hopefully, uh, at the latest by September. And, uh, so we, we, September one, so we'll be introducing somebody hopefully new to you at next month's meeting. But it, it, it's just a beautiful thing to watch them, to watch the young planners come in and watch how they grow and how they're able to, to provide, uh, the information to you. And because of you and because of this staff, uh, many of these young planners have been able to go on to new and better, uh, new opportunities, not better, new opportunities. And, uh, the young lady you were listening to today, Lauren Witt, uh, she was a planner in this office also. Uh, and did a wonderful job and left and went to, uh, I think, uh, Florida and then to Texas and so forth. But it just showed you what is happening here in Shreveport, that these young people can get this experience and knowledge and continue to move.
With that up through, I'm not gonna say another word. Well, ladies and gentlemen, if you park in the parking lot across the street, be sure and get with our fabulous secretary and get them stamped so that, uh, you can drop those in the box. Mr. Robinson, you know, simple part of the procedure, I would entertain a motion.
So move.
Second.
All those, all right, this meeting is adjourned.